Let me just, to those who aren't familiar with Form 92, this is the third generation business. It opened in May of 2011. They were nominated by BART, the Rex Porchage Small Engine Repair, that are known as BARTs. And everything I can tell from every comment that I've heard, this market is a typical old-time family market, and people love it. Great galley, great produce, great owners, and we really appreciate you putting a great location. Thank you guys.
I mean, just thank you for, you know, for the work that you've done on BART, you know, for this kind of, and it makes us, treat us as a little boy, and, you know, we're hard workers, and, you know, just cannot get this to say that we're trying to do what we're doing, and, you know, to do things better.
I appreciate it. I really love this community and all that stuff.
Yeah, we have a lot of people, and, you know, if it was any area that's left to them, it's another one, and it's really a blessing to be in some good neighborhood with good people, a lot of folks, and good families, and, yeah, I thought it would be good.
Thank you.
I'm the EFSW Council. Thank you very much. Congratulations. You continue to have great support.
You can leave. You're welcome to stay.
You had a question, Mr. Pitts?
Uh, maybe twenty-one. I received a lot of messages this weekend. I got to the point where I couldn't answer the phone, which is what I wanted to do. I tried to break it down, but I couldn't. Some people wanted to know why we call it a police levy if it's not a police levy?
Yes, it's a police levy. The money will be designated to go into a fund called the police levy. And it can only be used for police operations and equipment.
You know, for eight years, I've been honored for a police levy. Now we've got half of them.
And the general levy, the general levy will fund the other half.
I don't think they should be called a police levy because the police are getting credit for it, or they're not getting anything for it. Budget states that, the only thing I can see on the budget is that we're bad at math. The increase the police will get is fifty thousand dollars more this year than they did last year.
There is nothing in the proposed budget that reflects money if the levy has passed.
Well, one of the other things, Frank, is, is saying, are we just passing, are we just passing from one hand to the other? It benefits the police department from that. There's no benefit for the police department. I understand that.
Well, let me pass it. It's going to hire a full-time officer. I mean, that's a good idea.
Well, that's where the fifty thousand dollars come from. That's what I assume. So, for four hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty thousand, we'll have our plan first, or full plan first?
But you have, but we have flexibility to hire additional people by forty thousand dollars whole in the leaves of the general fund, means those for other things, including these. We can't, we can't yet designate a levy for something specific, and that's what we've done.
We've already, we already did the 2015 budget, and the money's already in the budget.
No, it's not.
Yes, it's, it's.
How did you say that, Bob?
It's in the 2015 budget.
Oh, it is? The new levy, right?
Yeah.
What do you mean it was? It can't be, because I've been voting on it. I know it hasn't been voted on, but it was on the paper, you know?
No, it's not. It's not included in the budget number. That's why there's such a large deficit going now, five years. If the, yes, if you look at the budget projection, without that levy, we will have a budget deficit over the next five years.
I think Bob made the confusion that the police department will be funding in the budget out of the general fund.
Right.
My understanding of this levy, should it pass, one of the adjustments we would make would be, and I don't want to use round numbers, but probably not exactly right. Let's say the levy generated four hundred thousand. The general fund appropriations for a police department would be reduced roughly three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes.
And that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars then could be spent on other issues. It's been stated that it would be spent primarily on capital projects such as streets and stormwater. But there is nothing that requires that it be spent on anything in the general fund.
It will be spent, it will be spent on whatever council promotes on, spends on. There were two ways that we could do it, Bob. Council could pass an increase in the, in the taxes without going to the voters. When you go to the voters, you have to designate as something. If you designate it as capital improvements, you are locked in where you cannot move that money for any kind of operations. It is strictly capital improvements without going, I think there's probably a legal way to go to the courts and get it moved. So, you pick, you take your pick. We said police and fire. And then they said, well, you can't have two, because it has to go in, what is generated by the levy has to go in that fund. You only have one levy.
Separate levy fund.
Right, that's good. Now, that has to be used for police and fire operations. The general fund, city council designates where that money is going to be spent.
I guess the question was, why isn't the money just put in the general fund?
You can't, you can't have a levy for that. It'd be a tax up, it'd be a general tax.
You could have just increased the inside millage. Well, you're taking, well, you're not letting the people vote on it.
Here's the point, Bob.
And then you're giving the million back to the police department.
No, here's the point, Bob. Right now, we know that we have four and a half mills that are expiring in December, or, or.
Four and a quarter.
Four and a quarter mills that are expiring in December. That means that as of December, the four and a quarter mills that have been collected for the last five years.
Fifteen.
Fifteen years will disappear. That money will no longer be available to the city. That millage ends. So, this levy was designed to designate that these four and a half mills, correct?
Four and a quarter.
These four mills will replace the funds that we are losing. But the four mills will be specifically designated for the police department, so that the police department is guaranteed that those funds will be paid, will be used for police services, operations, and equipment, and cannot be used on other general fund items. That means that if there is a financial shortfall in the general fund, it will affect other aspects of city government, but it will not affect the police department.
I would disagree with that, because the levy will not support the police department.
That's right. That's what I'm saying. The money that comes in for the police levy will not be utilized for anything.
Right, which is roughly, round numbers, forty percent of the possible police.
What, Bob, is certain, Dave, and we're just worried that you're thinking that it should, the budget should increase four hundred thousand, that would be correct? That the police department budget should increase the amount of the levy? Well, that's because of what is now, that we're asking.
No.
Are that weird? Is that, is that what you're concerned about?
No, what I'm concerned about, we're calling it a police levy. And I don't see a police levy here.
I think what you're saying is, if the police department budget increased four hundred thousand, you would agree it was all a police levy, but it's not going to. So, I mean, it's kind of a big.
For eight years, I've been honored for a police levy.
Right.
And we've never gotten one. Now we're getting a half of one. And the money comes into the levy, the money that went into the levy, or went into the police department before, goes back to the general funds.
Bob, every, every year, each fund starts at zero unless it has a levy, until council designates where those funds go. That's what the general fund does.
So, that's, we could.
The fire levy, the EMS levy, those are, those are stipulated for certain aspects. Fire is only for personnel. EMS is for equipment and personnel. If we had, if we had a totally funded police levy, then council wouldn't have a job. You wouldn't have to allocate any money if we have each allocation. But like, what we have is the general fund providing a hundred percent of the funding for the police. What we're asking the people to do, at no increase in their property taxes from what they've already been paying, is to set up a police levy that can cover the general fund. The general fund will still continue to fund the, the other part of the police department, and to whatever extent council votes on it.
But the, the general fund increases six hundred thousand, or, or.
Not more.
The general fund doesn't. The general fund doesn't increase at all.
The budget, the expenses reduced by.
Yes, the general, the general fund doesn't increase at all.
I, you know, nine years ago, Dave Bailey and I went around the neighborhoods and put on a talk about city finances, and we always said that at some point in time, that revenue for the general fund was going to have to increase. And we talked a lot about whether it was property tax or income tax increase or, or the decrease of the income tax credit. Well, here is the opportunity. I think, I think Bailey's projections back then at that time were fifteen, uh, 2015, maybe, maybe a little earlier, but. So, we have managed the money since 2004 to where we have not had to go back. So, there has not been a tax increase in the city of Norah Falls for probably since the income tax went to two percent, which I don't know when that was. It was long before my time.
That's not true, because the fire, EMS levies passed after that.
The fire EMS levy, that was in, what, ninety-four?
I'd have to remember the dates.
Ninety-five, somewhere around fifteen years. So, what we're asking the citizens to do is not increase how much they're paying, just continue paying, and we have to designate that. So, we decided, if council voted on it, to designate a police levy. And that's what, you know, that's what the fund will be if it passes. Now, if you want to go back and ask them for full funding next year.
So, in essence, so in essence, council could, could, if they wanted to, next year, appropriate that four hundred thousand dollar hole that's in the general fund for police if they wanted to.
Yes.
So, so in essence, we are giving them the, the opportunity, or giving us the opportunity to do what we want to with the police department. We can add people, I don't buy portions for, for police cars. I mean, council can do what it wants to do.
You just gotta be careful, because if you, if you look at communities around us, I know one community that put a presentation on here last January that, that they had more than, they had more than enough money in a, in a fire levy, but they don't have money for police.
Still does.
So, you have, you've got to be careful on how you do it, you know? Either council does it, or if the citizens do it, then you're locked in. I prefer to see council work out the budget.
I, I just have one other question. The budget we did, or we looked at the other night.
Did it, or didn't it have that in there?
The budget did not have the levy money here, because we cannot put it in there.
I thought you said it was in there.
We had, we have to do it another way. No, what I said, what I did on the budget, the budget does not have a levy there, because we cannot count it in, because it's not impressed. So, what I did was, I had those capital, especially the capital expenditure worksheets. What I did was, we put down the projected capital requirements that the property has identified. I put in red a negative. I took a lot of the numbers back out on those worksheets, saying that is probably the impact that we may have if we don't have the money. So, the bottom line, bottom line number in there, voters are going to operate with at this point. Now, if the levy passes, what we'll have to do, not with a now, big effect in 2015, most of it is the outer years, the impact. I mean, there'll be some changes to make next year. So, if the levy passes November, we will go back with the council in the end of February, out of February or so, with an update of the whole worksheet analysis and everything like that, or what is going to change, so. The numbers were in there, but I tried to show, by putting them on there, I tried to show the potential, again, it was just my guess, and the potential impact. If the money's not there, what's going to be affected by that next time?
Well, it says right in there here, and you notice, there's on the bottom of the first page, "The unknown regarding the November levy at the time of this budget preparation. General assumptions are noted reflecting the potential impact of not having the funds." I mean, that, right there, but they're not in there.
I think the confusion may be, the capital projects are listed, but then the public's taking that out.
Generally speaking.
Yeah.
In the capital area, they showed all this stuff, but the budget and the amount we get down to the bottom is a lot less than that, because you took the red to take them back out, and.
Yeah, because I could have left a lot and told, that would have just, I think, we lose track of things. I want, I want to have numbers on the table, as best we can see, and so we'll lose track of stuff like that.
And the capital, the, the capital expenditures is what, is what the real problem is in the outer years. I mean, because you never get away from those, you know, roads, you know? We have another heartburner, and, and we have a lot of road repairs, or a couple more storms like we've had, you know, um, those, those kinds of things. You know, the equipment is getting more expensive. Police cars used to be about thirty thousand, now they're about fifty thousand.
We used to run those ones.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll see if I can explain it to the twenty-five or thirty people that saw it.
I sincerely hope.
Let me make a suggestion.
Well, I didn't suggest that.
Invite them to Kimpton tomorrow night. They do a great job. We had a meeting last Wednesday. Dave and the mayor did a great job explaining to residents that showed up. Get them to have a Kimpton, and take the burden off yourself, and let them get a first hand.
Because right now, I'll be honest with everybody in here, right now, I don't want to vote in here.
That's all I just said.
It's important, Bob.
The only question I had in there, the one phone call that I had related to this that was from a person who was sitting on the fence, is, is the issue or the statement that, or the request, SOA for safety force collaboration. And I explained to them, they know how, they know where, and they know circumstances, but I believe that anyone in the council would support the merger.
You know, I stated that to the SOCE, and the SOCE has, um, they own the paper. They decide what they report and how they report it. The reporter, I talked to him last Thursday. He had called and said he was writing a story. When I talked to him, he asked me, is there anything that we want to include? And I, um, in no uncertain terms told him that people had expressed a concern about the SOCE's mayor saying that there was a, she wanted to collaborate with, um, safety forces. I explained to him that if the SOCE was in a position where they needed our help, that I thought that we could probably handle it for the property. But there's no way that we can receive the same quality services that our folks are, are providing to us at the same kind of money that it costs to run our own police department. And our residents do not want to hire out the police department. And SOCE has, uh, softened not to report that, and it's their paper.
I just, you follow up with that, does that include dispatch service? Are we willing to look at, if we can save money on dispatching, I would hope we'd be willing to look at that. That's all I'm asking.
We're already in dispatch. We're already in a, we're in a dispatch.
I understand that, but there's nothing wrong with occasionally getting a, oh, that was asking.
But here's the point, Steve. We're already collaborating with dispatch. We've been doing that for how many years?
Well, we've been doing that forever. It goes back to town.
Okay.
Okay. All I'm saying is, okay, we see what they want versus what they charge. And the other thing I would suggest is that if you write another letter to SOCE, say, "I'm honored, because the last letter you wrote said, 'We'll talk about it after January.'"
And I never got a response, so.
Okay. That's all I.
I have no, you just asked for an observation. I had three phone calls. Two of them were very simple questions. One's a one I related. A few minutes ago, Mr. Pitts has had twenty-five or thirty. I'm just curious what the rest of the members of council have heard.
I personally had about fifteen phone call emails about the issue. And people are pretty mixed. I mean, I'll be honest with them. I mean, what I endeavor to do is point out that, yes, the police department's not going to gain anything as far as budgetarily, if it frees up money in the general fund. The concern I had here from residents over and over is, you know, kind of what they say is, you know, if we're going to spend it on streets, we should have a street levy on, or something like that. And I personally agree with that, because that's where the problem is, is the capital fund. And I personally believe we are now at a critical point where we're paying the price for not doing as much capital improvements as we historically have done.
Historically, you know, um.
How many street fees did you pay last year?
Historically, in the last ten years, we have, we had our capital, uh, accounts have spent six million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars, or six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, almost six hundred and twenty-nine thousand a year.
But that's not a doubt every year. I would give it a year-by-year.
Do I know it every year?
I would, I'm requesting now you send me a year-by-year breakdown, and what it was spent on. Because one of the problems, as you know, I said before, we appropriate a budget thinking we're going to do this, and we don't do that, we do something else.
We've been on the record.
That we can't dictate money to pay the street, up to twenty-five thousand. If we budget twenty-five thousand in a capital project to buy a piece of equipment, we can't require that, that money can be spent on something else. There's nothing we can do about it. That's what we have been told.
And this general way of reporting, you should have peppered on the paving streets and outfits.
Not suggesting that at all. You need to be flexible.
I'm deflexing.
Yeah, that's, that was my point, Steve, is that, you know, five years ago, we were in like drought conditions, and nobody could talk about swimming. And when you, you know, one water main break can completely change.
Water main has to be picked out of water.
And, well, I understand that, but I like the idea of saying, you know, two things here, because I had a few, a few calls, not, not many. But basically, what I've told people is the fact that, you know, if you're marketed solely for something like stormwater, there are certain, you know, neighborhoods that would certainly just say, we have a problem here.
You were, you wasn't suggesting.
And so, this is something that benefits the higher community. It is not, you know, that means, it's not like we're going back for, you know, this is not a new tax per se. And, you know, it's money that, you know, the money that you're giving us, that you're giving us some latitude to do the things that you've done. But I think that's much more of a focus than, you know, the laws, because the police, no, the police department is going to be just fine, and they may get, you know, that fee out of that. They may, you know, there's, there's capital items there that they will certainly benefit from. So, I think that that's the key to this, is that it's just a kind of a realignment of, of the pot, if you will.
I get that.
And we as council need to have that flexibility to be able to do things as they are needed. We just don't, we don't know. To, to, to pitch on something that says this is the only thing it can be used for, may not necessarily be our best interest.
But that's what the levy does.
Our residents are going to have a chance to keep the city on a good financial key with basically no increased cost. If it doesn't be taken advantage of, then the next thing down the line is at some point in time asking for an actual tax increase, which will get people in their pockets. So, it's really, I hate for that to be lost in some instances.
Well, the other thing you need to keep in mind, because I did have three people, and I applied, I did some research, it's a five-year levy.
You mentioned that last week?
Well, sure, because it doesn't solve your problem long-term.
It does not.
No, but the point of the matter is, it gives the people that live in the community an opportunity to express today how they feel about the management of the city. And five years from now, if they're disenchanted with the way city council spent the money, they don't have to renew the levy. So, you know, the benefit of small government is the voters get to tell you how to do your job, in this case, every five years. Not a fifteen or twenty year, where you guys get to do what you want. I'm not suggesting you would, but the benefit of a five-year levy is the residents get to say, you know what, we're going to take a look at this in five years and see if the city lived up to its promises. If it did, we renew the levy. If it didn't, we won't. That's the government. I remember in two thousand and three, you pressed to decrease the, you were all in favor of the city council decreasing the income tax credit, which the people didn't get to vote on until the people that I had put together got it on the ballot. It wasn't too long ago that you wanted to increase, you wanted to see the income tax increase.
We who?
You.
Me. I wanted to see the, I would like to know when I suggested we increase the income tax.
Well, two thousand twelve, your friends in SOCE wanted it.
No, what I said was, we need to give the people an opportunity. That's what I did. I was.
You wanted, you wanted to put an income tax increase on the ballot designated for police.
Yeah, because I'd rather be honest with people, speaking of administrative fees and stuff like that. But we can debate that wherever we have a large audience. I mean, those are the issues I think the levy will do. You're absolutely right. I think it should be up to the people. They need to decide, you know? I just wanted, they need to clearly understand, because everybody's agreed. If we get that money, it frees up money in the general fund to spend on other things.
Well, I can't follow it in any other way. For the life of me, I cannot see a negative to issue twenty-nine. I can't see a negative.
I'm surprised. It came out in the paper, and you supported issue twelve.
I do, absolutely.
Which is the same thing. I got a flyer the other day about issue twelve, and it had a half a dozen firemen on the front of it, a half a dozen firemen on the back of it. And I don't think the county has a county fire department, but it's for safety forces. And in reality, it gets over whatever county council doesn't accept money for use for. Basketball, arena, or.
The literature strongly came out of that, Mr. Mayor, you're this here.
It's for safety, I'm issue twelve.
Huh?
It's for safety.
There's no such thing as county fire department.
I know, but.
But the literature, but the literature.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about, I understand the relevance of that, but it's for safety forces.
Correct.
The point is, the literature that they mailed out showed firemen on the front and back of literature voting in favor of the safety force. The county doesn't even have a fire.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying, but it's for safety, but saying it's not for safety forces is, is right safety we have here.
I have nothing, I don't have to go to the letter, I didn't get it. I don't have something.
Isn't it for safety force?
It's got a radio system, chairs.
It has to be for safety force.
They pulled the arena out, because they had such an outbreak. Bill Romer, Lori Rogers, or that thing would have went through. There was a lot of confusion with that. It was more about the arena than it was about the, not about the safety.
In every year, if you're not watching, uh, what it's designated for, because every year, just like you guys knew a budget, the county council does a budget.
My take on this, people in Norah Falls have told me time and time again that they want their own police fire EMS. I think everybody sitting up here knows that. If it's explained, they explain to them correctly, get them to come to Kimpton tomorrow night at seven o'clock. These people who have called to you, let's get them, let's have an educated decision. Let them hear the presentation, I think, would be helpful.
Because the last one, that was not tuning people. I was very disappointed. I was very, I thought for sure a lot of citizens would show up, and unfortunately, for whatever reason, they're not out there. They're calling them, and I think it's.
Well, we've had flyers distributed to the southwest section of town. And we, I have flyers that are up in businesses. And we, I have flyers that are up in businesses, some more that will be up tomorrow. And the, if the councilmen, if the work council people are going to walk the neighborhoods, I have, I have flyers that can be passed out. I also have made arrangements to cover areas that if council people don't cover them, they'll get covered. So I hope to talk to you after the meeting about the areas that you will cover. Copy that.
Any further, Mayor?
At this time, your mayor is important enough.
Okay. Let's move on to our board of directors, Morrison.
On a lighter note. On a lighter note. I will be sixty-two years of age on Saturday.
So.
And I'll be sixty-two years of age on Saturday. And there are four things that I remember from having been a Boy Scout. Be prepared, do a good turn daily. On my honor, I will do my duty to do my best to God and my country, to obey his scout laws at all times, to help other people, to keep myself mentally strong and morally straight. And I also remember the scout law. A scout is obedient, cheerful, thirty, brave, clean, reverent.
Trustworthy.
Trustworthy, loyal, whole, friendly, courteous.
I've been doing that.
Circle thirty, bro. I was in bad in scouting activity was when I was seventeen years of age. And that's what I remember from scouting. So stick with it. And if you get to be my age, I hope you're able to remember what I remember. That's all I have for you.
I can't let that go. My father was a scout master for a good number of years. We used to call him Great and Howl. But he and I, when we were out of scouting, he told me, and this is where, this is for the leaders, he told me, he said, "You don't mind we always tent camp?" I said, "No." He said, "Well, one year," and I remember this quite well, "we cabin camped out at Manitowoc in the winter." He said, "I figured that if you tent camp, you guys will be so busy trying to keep warm in the winter that you won't get in trouble." He was right. So you guys might be tent camping.
They're better behaved than you, Mr. Mayor.
Life is a lot of behavior.
Okay, that's it for our board of directors. Okay. As president councilor, our next regular council meeting, held Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand fourteen, at seven o'clock. And I'd just like to mention to our staff here at City Hall, they did a nice job with all the decorations and accommodating our guests this evening night, council. On behalf of council, I want to thank them. And moving on, director of finance.
Just wanted to comment after, because we did get another refund from the Women's Comp this year, which was nice, from the free gifts. We got twenty-six thousand dollars returned to us.
Okay, Mayor, any additions or any information from the service department?
Yeah. The service, service department's getting ready for leave pickup. The, I know we still have to sign up, hiring part-time people for that. Police chief, everything is pretty much running as usual. Our good guys are catching bad guys. We did earlier mention that the canine officer is working part-time, has another department, and we will be splitting the costs of care for the dog. I talked to the fire chief earlier. The, of course, the big thing is the Ebola. I believe Monday that there's a, there's a big training session. Was it an hour long telephone conference today? The Summit County, Akron has taken a EMS squad, has stripped it out and plasticized it for a transportation purposes. The, the protocol is going to be for dispatch services to try to get a handle on, you know, is this a person that has been exposed to Ebola? There's a special number that dispatch is supposed to connect them to if there is a, if there is a possibility. And the, I think by now, people have, have kind of realized that this is, this is more reactionary. It's, you know, it's not an airborne problem that you have to, you have to be in contact with the person, bodily fluids, but whatever. They are preparing that we will not transport if something happens in the community. Akron will send their transportation. We may not even know that, that they are, they are coming. And they will be transported to the hospital, which has been taken precautions of setting up a special area, et cetera. That's where, that's all I, I know now. I'm not, I'm not real concerned about it. I know that we are being very, very cautious on the people. I know yesterday, my wife received a phone call from Hudson School System saying that a student's mother was on the plane, and they assured everybody that the, the school had been sanitized and everything. So, you know, hopefully, hopefully, we will, we will be ready for nothing, that nothing will occur at all. That's where we stand on that.
I just have a question. Service department. And this would probably mean for the mayor to relate to Mr. Bowery, and maybe to Morrison also. But we had the issue with water lines, the water services on North River, that had to be done, but we can't get done, because they weren't very deep enough. I think there's a performance bond in place for that. Is that correct?
We are working on that.
Right.
The, the company that installed them.
Right.
Was.
Spano.
Has already agreed to cover the cost of the restoration.
Well, in addition to that, I would ask, because I know our road department has still repatched and filled part of it, that the, almost the entire length of the ditch where the water line was dug. And I know Mr. Nice, so in fact, earlier came out and had concerns all along about their compacting. You can clearly see the cracks in some parts, it's sinking substantially. So I would request that the performance bond covers that or something, because.
Have you talked to Bowery about that?
I talked, he's passed it in a couple spots, and I mentioned it to him. I know he's busy with nine million things. But I just, I want to make sure, again, I don't know how much performance bond is, but to have that ditch sinking already after a couple years is ridiculous. And you can see it if you drive down to the department's office.
Oh, okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Another question is moving on, reports of committees, starting with community and economic development. I attended the Stone, Monroe Falls Chamber Commerce Meeting today. Chief Posa and Miggy sat together, discussed some city issues. And today was the annual meet your candidates that are running for office. They had the two state senators, and they had the two state representatives for our area. Did a nice job. It wasn't a debate, it was just an informative forty-five minutes of questions and answers. About all four people that were running for office did a real nice job. On the Stone, Monroe Falls Chamber in April, they're preparing for, and that'll be their fiftieth anniversary, fifty years they've been around, the Stone, Monroe Falls Chamber. Couple things to us in Monroe Falls. One, November sixth, the Economic Development Business Breakfast, which is part of the chamber, we have the, there's some annual Economic Development Business Breakfast that will be next door at our fire department training room, seven-thirty in the morning, costs five dollars. Beginning of overall itinerary, but it's going to be on search engines, optimization, employers, do's and don'ts, intellectual property, corporate law. There's some other subjects, too. That's coming up on Thursday, November sixth. Kiran's Custom Jewelry, a Monroe Falls resident, is having a after five, Stone, Monroe Falls After Five networking opportunity, Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, five to seven P M. I have information after the meeting, if you're interested in going. She's over in Steeplechase. Speaking of Steeplechase, I was happy to say, and I'm sure most of you noticed, I get more calls on that than the police levy of what's happening with that property. I think the owner made a good decision to list it with a commercial broker instead of trying for sale by owner, somebody professional that can draw some professional people.
You're talking about Triple Crown.
Yeah.
What did I say? You said Steeplechase.
The whole place. Yeah, sorry. Triple Crown, yeah. Yeah, Triple Crown needed that, and we spent the whole summer, he lost a lot of market time, so hopefully, somebody professional can track somebody down on that. Also, I was surprised, too, one of the comments today, one of the current office owners quoted a guy, a lot of using names, kind of, I don't know what to talk about. She said she spoke with the Stone City Council, several members of the Stone City Council, she didn't call them out by name. And her presentation was, you know, the state has cut back because we've felt a lot of money. And her, the Stone City Council people she talked to said, "Yeah, that hurt a little bit, but we find other ways to make revenue, and we don't want the money back." This is what she said in her speech, and she kind of really, really shocked me. I thought I was hearing things that they don't want the money back, and they, they found sources. And that's contrary to everything that I've heard in Stone, you know, some financial problems, so not going under, but looking for more money. It made sense, but just funny how people interpret different things. And that's all I have on my report. Our next community development meeting will be Tuesday, November eleventh, two thousand fourteen, at six thirty. Any questions? Okay, moving on, finance and audit.
Thank you. Finance and audit, met earlier this evening. We reviewed the outstanding check register nine dash five C. Also went over all of the nine thirty month end reports, including the bank reconciliation statement, our revenue statement, budget statement, cash investment statement. Also reviewed the mayor's court year-to-date numbers, as well as the police academy. Happy to see that we are indeed going to conduct that. And I'm starting November first. Sorry. November. November third, science says. Also did look at our miscellaneous net income reports for the K-9 unit, Mayor House, and you guys' park lodge. I again will acknowledge receipt of the overall funds revenue and expense reports for the month of September. We did have a little bit of discussion, we didn't have a whole lot of time, and for the discussion on the post ordinances, twenty-fourteen dash four through twenty-fourteen dash eleven. Think the one, the only real issue, I think, because again, most of this is just moving all of the different prices, if you will, you know, and the expenses within the ordinances to one area, which I believe will be chapter one sixty-three. But there is one new item in there, and we kind of got cut off. So Mr. Nick, if you had the floor at that point, did you have anything more that Mr. Morrison here could tell me?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I respect the position of the city. I just don't actually agree.
So, and again, you know, if, you know, I always like to try to make these, you know, if there's a question on it, I'd like to.
Let me kind of speak of generally, because this isn't a, this isn't a new issue. Most communities have adopted this. And what communities have done, and you're not going to see the tolling fees, but Mr. Stolby looks up at the juvenile court, could tell you this, that, for example, when someone in juvenile court has fines and costs that they can't pay that day, and they went into a payment program, the courts now charge them a fee to enter into a payment program. Why? Because the payment program requires that the clerk's office has to monitor.
I, I was just, it's not true, juvenile court is in Stone, it's.
Well, it's actually true. It may not be juvenile court, I'm saying, because you're involved in court.
Right, exactly.
All of the municipal courts have it. The common police court have it. What they basically are doing is saying, okay, people that have become involved in the criminal process, and the criminal process, whether we like it or not, includes traffic offenses, DUIs, driving matter suspensions, all OVIs, fleeing police and things like that. There are criminal aspects to traffic citations. What the court systems have done, which is a part of our government, is they're saying the people that are breaking the laws, whatever they are, they should bear a heavier burden on the expenses that they're imposing, or the work that they're imposing on the court systems, rather than the law-abiding citizens picking up the tab for everything. So when you go to court today, you pay fines and costs. Many of you have read about Stone's fines and costs, that they, they sound, they sound like they're outrageous. Well, they might, they might be outrageous if, if you're new to the system. But people that have been involved in repeated DUIs, or OVIs, or traffic citations, they use that system, whereas many of you, and particularly those of you who are scared of it, shouldn't have any of those things. You know, you're being, you're being asked through your tax dollars to help support the increased costs of the court system that is, in most respects, on the criminal side, dealing with a very small portion or a population. So what they've done in all the court systems, and maybe not juvenile court, but in all municipal courts, when you go in and you have a fine to pay, your fine today is two-hundred and fifty dollars. Well, your honor, I can't afford to pay that today, so I would like to have six months to pay, or five months. Okay, we'll let you pay it fifty dollars a month for five months, but we're going to add another twenty dollars on to it, because now, every month, when you come in, we have to have a clerk fill out the paperwork, put it in the computer, send it down to the B M V that your fines are being paid on a percentage basis, and there's increased costs associated with that. Every community that I'm aware of, and Steve, you were the chief of police here, how long?
Twenty-three years and nine months and three days. It was counted.
There you go. It was counted. You know this, that all, the sheriff's department, all the police departments, the city of Akron, city councils, they all charge an administrative fee for you to get a legal release that has been impounded as a result of a law enforcement officer impounding you.
That is, that's what I think.
I'm not sure, it wasn't what I was achieving.
Here's why I disagree. Number one, if they're guilty, if you're going to pay your money, that's, that takes the cost more, that the, the plan should cost more, if that's the case. I just, for example, I have a friend of mine.
But the money doesn't go to the, for example, in a respect, like, what you say, it would be easy to do it, we could just say, okay, let's increase the, the fines and costs of the courthouse. But we have no control over that, because the judges up there are the ones that establish the fines and costs. And if they collect a higher, finer cost, it doesn't migrate back to us to cover the costs associated with us having an officer come in to do a legal release.
For example, I had a friend who, the B M V screwed up their tags, basically. They bought a two-year tag, and they only gave three months, or six months. Year later, they pulled over, carted it out, wasn't his fault whatsoever. It was completely, another thing that's clear, but he has to pay that hundred and fifty for, it's almost like criminalizing someone who's guilty, right? That's why I feel like what it is. You criminalize someone who's not even guilty. And I.
I just, I'm just, in general, personally, this is the first time, I'm just so sick and tired of spending administrative fees, everything you do. I'm just, I'm just, I mean, cable bill, gas bill, cell phone, I just.
It's a service, it's a use.
But it's a tax, it's a tax to us for them. Well, that's what we're paying taxes for. So every time you go to these forces, you gotta, you have to pay something. Well, that's why I'm, that's why we're paying taxes.
We're paying taxes, we're covering. We're gonna raise taxes and cover it.
How, how, what's, what, see, I check a box and say, hey, you know, this vehicle, what's the process procedure for coming in?
It's an impound fee.
Okay, well, what's the procedure of impounding a car for police officer checking a box?
I don't know.
No, it's not, it's not the impounding, it's for them to get that vehicle out of the tow yard after it's been towed. But let's assume it's an accident out there, there's no criminal behavior, the vehicles get towed, before that vehicle can be released, the person who owns that vehicle has to go to the police department and get it released. If it's an automobile accident, no, you know, even though someone may have been involved in the accident, no criminal behavior, we give them the releases. These are vehicles that have been, for example, if you're drinking and driving, you're caught with drugs in your vehicle, you're, you're stealing and driving through one of the streets and the police get you, and they order your vehicle to be impounded. If they ordered impounded, you have to pay a hundred dollar administrative fee to get it out. That's all that is. It's a use fee. It's, it's a use fee.
If I may, Mr. Nagar. My concern is, we have nowhere near a hundred dollar loss. The, the process, unless it has changed dramatically to get it released, is you have to come in. In the case of an OVI or driving under suspension, you have to come in with a second license driver, so you have somebody's license to drive. Okay, just give you a piece of paper, you go to the tow yard, get it. If it's not something where you're driving with a singular judgment for theft in that, that situation, it's a kind of a proof of insurance and ownership. We give you a piece of paper that says, take it to the tow yard, okay, release. You may have to call the officer after hours in to do that.
And if we do, we have to pay them three hours for a call.
No, no, it's the duty officer that does that. You're not calling somebody from home.
Well, I'm saying, if there is no one available, if that officer that you want to have come in and sign that tow request is at your house investigating burglary, we've got to call someone else in, and we pay.
I doubt you do that, but they do, it's covered. If I only system, you say, there's nobody available, it'll be three hours to back.
I just see it totally different, right? You're using the system, you're, you're using the service, and, and, you know, you use the service, you're gonna pay a fee, you're gonna paper over it. It's, it's, it affects smaller people. It's a service that, that we have to do, and by God, we should get one for it. You penalize a criminal, so it could be.
They're not criminals.
You're just driving a car.
They're not criminals.
But they're not people.
You're charged.
You're charged.
You're lying to somebody.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, breaking the law.
But that's one person.
There's many ways.
Once he's convicted, he is.
But, but, for example, like I said, like, some guy got his car towed because, what I'm saying, but still.
He's still using the system.
Still, still.
He's using the service.
Why don't you want to amend it to make it up to a hundred dollars and make it discretionary?
No, I'd like it, if you're gonna charge anything, I'd like it to reflect their true cost, which is a total sum.
Last week you committed to, you posed that as a considerable amount of administrative time and effort.
Well, I would like to, I'm gonna ask you, when he's like.
Why, so why, we still have the overhead of having people around, having called in. Why does that have to be the actual cost? I mean, we, we're talking about tax increases and so on. Why can't this, this fee on a person that uses the services pay, offset some of the future costs?
I just.
I don't see, I can get in this.
Sure. Well, don't, why would you call anybody in any, we're open till four-thirty in the afternoon. If they can't get their car by four-thirty in the afternoon, they get it the next day.
I agree.
The tow yard's open until five.
I agree.
I can't help that.
I agree with that.
I'm just saying, it doesn't presume them to come here at nine o'clock at night, they can't live at home. The tow yard won't let go.
Then they show up at the warden, or they show up before four-thirty?
And it might be their work in there.
It's still a fee, you still have to have a clerk downstairs in the police department do the paperwork, and it's gotta be processed. So. Terry House, fellas, the students, what do you want to pay for?
I respect this.
I mean, I respect that, but.
It's not a free lunch, Steve, it's not a free lunch.
I resent that comment, Mr. Busick. God help you if you ever have something where your car gets impounded, even if you're not driving it. Or you get found charged with something, you found not guilty.
He used the system, pays the money.
If you get, if you found not guilty in court, you don't pay court costs. You use the system.
If you're found not guilty, you still have to pay the tow bill, but they can't tow your vehicle.
Right, but you don't pay court costs.
You don't get a tab.
So, there was no, I, the offer that was put on tables to amend this, to, you know, put it up to a hundred dollars, and, and to make that discretionary, it's on like that.
I don't think that that would be a wise decision.
I would agree with that.
Because then you have opened the door that people are being.
Discriminated against. You like that?
Pretty much.
I was gonna suggest that the law director had that.
No, I don't want that.
Is there any way to put it for provenance and get their money back?
I would say, okay, that one. Maybe do that.
What are they gonna get or something?
I don't know.
That's where people work in the hospital.
My paper comes in each year.
Your lives are proven innocent.
I don't know, I'm not, I'm just saying.
It happens, but, you know, it's not.
I'm just saying, my point is, is, look, they were stopped, they were stopped for driving in a period of, they were stopped for driving.
They were stopped already under the influence.
Exactly.
So, they crossed the.
But it's not just the drunk driver. I mean, that's my point. It's not just drunk drivers.
And going back to this, this, this isn't somewhere invented. I don't call the falls asset.
A hundred dollars?
Check the talent, I don't know the exact amount.
I, 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 I.
Snow doesn't need it.
No, they're acting like the state.
Okay.
The state took a lot of money away from us.
I agree, that's right.
Well, that's, that's okay.
That's another debate.
It's been over hour and a half. This one goes off for surgery in the next meeting, I'll read more.
Okay.
Yeah, getting back to our agenda for the C D V, you didn't really have a chance to talk about the proposed resolution two thousand fourteen dash forty-four, which is up for first reading tonight. Is there any need for emergency or decision on that, number three? Okay, and we also have proposed resolution two thousand fourteen dash forty-one, which is up for second reading tonight. So, at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the bank reconciliation statement, eight nine three, on the fourth.
That's second.
Mr. Visser?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
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 Our next finance and audit meeting is Tuesday, November fourth, consistent with the end.
I just have one comment, and I think I just forgot to mention, as we had a discussion during the hiking committee that, well, tonight only, because of the related dangers of the ordinances, that I think all council was okay, instead of reading by title, two thousand fourteen dash oh five through two thousand fourteen dash eleven, we could just do one motion, giving a second reading of ordinances, two thousand fourteen oh five through two thousand fourteen eleven, such as county councils, if it gives us, but we'd like to, that's just for tonight, because they're all related to the same, moving all the fees to the same area, and I believe council was okay with that. And I knew you'd love it.
So, you're, thank you.
Gary, that was the longest finance meeting you ever did.
Sorry.
That's the longest finance meeting you've ever.
It was just like the old government services day, so. Okay, thank you, Mr. Tof. Moving on, general government services, Mr. Panham.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, did most of my, my report with the service director, but also I'd like to comment that last meeting, the service director said that the storms that were, that's pretty all done. We have a couple of things that are working on, but we're doing really well with that, and, and, like I said, even though they are working on that, because I know they actually work pretty hard and a lot of late hours and overnight and all that stuff. Also, too, a side note, actually, are we being on the left on November? Isn't that better, is that?
Uh, city hall.
Uh, city hall. Okay, so are we, just don't, because it's, it's, cancel my calendar, but. And what, Mr. Mayor, is there any change in that, correct? And were there some other, other issues or wants to, Mr. Mayor, about that?
Um, Ann, Ann presented the, everybody with a, a list of, of the different costs by the, by the different vendors, and, and also as a, for comparison, of what we have been paying people that have, that are really doing it now, and also, I believe, included in that was, you could look at the usage, you know, and then, you know, council's gonna have to make a decision if, if the usage of the website is enough, that, and warrants improving, seven or eight thousand dollars it will cost to do a new one. Her recommendation was if you decide to go with a, a new website and that, to use somebody that's in the city.
So, you want council to make that decision in there this time?
I would, you know, I like the direction from, you know, I, I look at it, and I look at, it's got, it'll get a whole lot of usage.
Well, I think if it's approved, the usage will go up. I think you do, in my opinion, if there's content on there that's more viable, usage will go up.
Unless you're in it, so.
Yeah, it's gonna, I mean, just in general, it'll go up.
We talked about it at the next meeting.
Definitely, yep, we'll deal with it, definitely. Um, and the A-Mark program on the way, correct? We're, we're preparing for that.
Uh, contracts have been signed, equipment is being purchased, we had, had at least one, I think we've had a couple, couple leaving rooms, we'll be carrying, carrying up.
That's good, that's gonna pop up a lot.
Um, Mr. Bowery will, I'm sure will update you, and I have not heard a date as to when we will, we're working on, we're working on placement of, of transit towers. The, I know that we've had a couple discussions on that, we need to add some more. We want to stick one in the middle of River, River Park.
Right, that's a terrible, right, that's a terrible.
Yeah. John offers is back here.
I heard Russell.
I had the A-Marks on, I'm pretty close to you, you know.
I, I suggest putting between the plans.
Um.
Yeah, that's one of the spots that they, yeah, maybe not.
And, and just lastly, is, Mr. Panham, working on the tablets and the paperless, I think we're moving in the right direction with that, we'll have some first leaf here.
Yeah, what I found out the last couple of days, I had this guy drive, wonder I had a company to use solution for, the Microsoft application somewhere, probably use the Dropbox.
Dropbox.
So, I had Eric, if you wonder, I'll set that up on server, and we did that stuff and run through the Dropbox.
Awesome.
So, that should be good.
Good.
And once that is all set up and ready to go, he's gonna get the Dropbox system.
Great, great. Is there any, any activity on the process with the, particularly with the police department?
Jim was working, Jim was working with, Jim was trying to make some changes there, and I think he's, some didn't work right yet, got all the electronics, come in, I think, this will be something or something. Well, part of it, part of the little bit of what the police chief wants to do, we can't do it. We've got to simplify the routine of it.
How do you get a way to get to a person?
Nothing, you can't do it with the system we have. You can only have one, they, they think they can have a phone call, a policeman, you can't do that with that system. A lot more expensive, creative system, so they, you've got to simplify the requirement of that.
So, you want to refer it back to?
It's gonna go just to the clerk. You call in for a policeman, they're ever to the clerk. I think that's about it. You can't go to, you can't forward into a policeman.
What about that?
There's a, there's a, there's a recording for after that.
There's a recording for, but nobody answered.
Uh, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to get electronics in to take care of all that resetting.
I had.
That has been done, that has been done at least three times since I've been here the last two years. I had problems with it. And we got it, so the police chief has to identify exactly what people want and what he, he done, and, and, I, I give contact to electronics to bring them in, to get that straight away. I think he made contact with them this week or the last few days, and a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, you don't want to waste the time, so we got to make sure no one wants to.
Yeah, that's part of the, okay.
I had problems with it, thinking, gave them to the gray screen, and turned up my screen to get away from the police. And we had a discussion, and I called the, I didn't want to call nine.
Nine to three five five five.
That's the dispatch number, non-emergency dispatch number, six eight eight three five five.
That's a recording.
No, dispatch, it's not a recording.
All it is, is a group.
And that's what the number is, you all. Six eight eight three five.
What I would like to have, if that's offered, that's gonna be, you know, if you're dispatched, you call this number.
As we all, you know.
Should be something.
Something indicates that, you know, call this number to the best.
Oh, no.
Well, that concludes my report, and our next meeting is on November eleventh, seven eighteen.
Just a broad daily, not you ask, if that number that you just described as a non-emergency dispatch, see if they can set our phone system up so that after hours, it automatically rolls over to that non-emergency dispatch number, and then anytime someone calls, the police department, it would automatically.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
At least ask the question, you need to do a call forwarding mechanism, so that at four-thirty, when the police clerk leaves, she has call forwarding, any company that comes in rolls over to the non-emergency dispatch.
And I'm sure the system's changed inside the, that was possible, kind of.
That may, that may.
We did forward call, we had a, had a work.
So, a little problem.
Been a little practice.
Okay, moving on, public safety, Mr. Barnes?
Yes, public safety, that last week, and both chiefs gave forward reports, if you've seen or read and commented on, and public safety meets again on November eleventh, two thousand fourteen, six thirty, and, and that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Planning Commission, Mr. Pitts?
Before you have a visit, six eight eight three five five five. Yes. Do have to switch. Okay, um, no worries. Planning Commission will, will meet again October the twenty-eighth. We have two applications, one's for Brooke Dick, and another one froze me, is for a new sign called, called Crooked River Realty. Does anybody know this app?
Crooked River Land.
Really? Is that new business for a new sign?
I have not seen, I have not heard of it. Would see any of us.
Uh, a real estate.
Fifty-four thousand.
Fifty-four?
Fifty.
That'd be the business. There's no real estate companies down there. Maybe they sent in the, the mortgage building stuff, they're gonna be right in that area.
I think this.
Somebody else.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four would be that area, that's, that's the building.
They, they just get a ten mill quicker than the road. But yeah, they're applying for a sign, I don't see any application for it. Uh, like I said, we meet October the twenty-eighth, seven o'clock, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. A quick question, Bob, is, uh, voters on, maybe, maybe?
I have no idea. She didn't send me a notice, so I'm assuming them. I'll find out tomorrow when you.
Moving on, Parks Recreation, Mr. Busick?
Yes, Park Board is on that since our last round of council meeting. I do have one amendment to report I gave around October seventh meeting. At that time, going on a document that I received earlier this year, it stated that we had three board members who's turned up in the share, which is J.J. Mesko, Kimmich, Sarah Jewett, and Sarah Hagemer. Candy downstairs heard that, and this indeed, and she found in fact, one of those is an actor, is, is actually board number Randy Worthington, whose term expires on the seventh thirty-first. This Mesko Kimmich is up next year, December fifteenth. So, the second hour is Jewett, but also Jewett December fourteenth, but it's Randy Worthington, who's, uh, term is up in the year.
Steve?
Park Board is set to meet again on Thursday, November sixth, at seven P.M. at the A-Mark House. Our report is set to meet again on Thursday, November sixth at seven P M at Lee's House. This is my report.
Did you take some alternate position over that with that one?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
She has a non- inspired term.
The last council business from last June twenty thirteen, uh, Randy was going for a vacant position, his term expires December fourteenth. This is my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Music. Uh, now persons appear for council, and have anybody signed up, anybody want?
It was nice, it was.
Just a reminder, uh, any citizen wishes to address council, please state your name, address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Thank you. Bill Nice, five twenty-one Riverdale Circle. I would just like some clarification on the comments I heard from all of you this evening. First of all, the levy if passed will generate over four hundred thousand dollars, which will go into the general fund.
No, it goes into a police levy, just not going to the general fund.
So the council will not have to designate those funds that can be used for the police.
They're restricted.
They can be used for the police.
That was kind of in doubt from what I heard earlier. That's absolutely my statute, it can only be used for the police, that's what I thought.
Next, uh, there was mentioned a fifty thousand dollars needed for an additional officer. And if the levy doesn't pass, I, I guess the question is if it passes or it doesn't pass, are you looking to add that fifty thousand dollars for another officer?
In the budget, the police chief had requested to add a full-time officer, uh, to the payroll for next year, and it's approximately with all the benefits, it costs us around eighty thousand dollars. And I put it in the budget, I mean, I put the information in notes, if you do not have it in next year's payable budget, because there's no money for it. So that would, if it were passed, then that would be something the council could adjust for next year and then put that in place.
But that was not discussed last week at your committee meeting as part of the deficit.
It was mentioned, it was mentioned in the discussion.
But not as a deficit?
What's that?
The hiring of another police officer.
I think, I think the chief said if the levy passed, as he would have, it's not discussed to add if it didn't pass.
So it's not even as a deficit, because they didn't include it in the budget. It only will be included if the levy passes.
And we have, the budget has to be amended by council.
And lastly, there was a comment, I believe, last Tuesday, I think, Mr. Mayor mentioned is, the current police chief that was hired this year would like the city to pay for his health benefits next year, is that correct?
That is the letter.
And what does it cost to the city?
About ten thousand dollars.
A thousand? Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, uh, at this time, I know on time constraints, it's eight twenty, and I understand if, uh, our guests, if someone has to leave, um, we're, we're probably about, uh, ten minutes away. If you can stay, or if you got to leave, uh, excuse me this time. Any questions? Any, uh, questions, comments, or observations? We don't worry. The guys, there's a test coming at the end, you got to.
And do you understand that you all agreed by coming here tonight, that you get older, if you have to run for election instead of your, that's what us out there are like, you know?
Okay, moving on, legislation. Uh, ordinance for first reading, none. Uh, Mr. Bailey, handle ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance for second reading, uh, included ordinance number two thousand fourteen dash zero four.
That one we want to be.
Oh, you want that up?
That's separate from the fees.
Two thousand fourteen dash zero four, and ordinance amending section one eleven seventy-six twenty zero one C, entitled definition, red definition of building official for purposes of enforcement, chapter eleven seventy-six, entitled ordinance. Okay, so the second reading then will be ordinance two thousand fourteen dash zero five, zero six, zero seven, zero eight, zero nine, and ten, and eleven.
Okay. Thank you. Just to explain to, to the scouts, whenever we pass an ordinance or a resolution, an ordinance is published in, uh, the official book. Uh, a resolution doesn't get published like that, uh, but, uh, they normally get three readings, and there are, uh, there are certain conditions where some items must be read at three different meetings, and, um, sometimes the rules can be suspended, and, uh, it can be read at one meeting and adopted, uh, which we try to stay away from. We try to, uh, do the three readings as much as possible. So we're not just regrouping something or ramroding something through that, so. That's why you see, if you get one of these, that's why you see the ordinance is listed, it'll be first reading, second reading, third reading.
If I may follow up on comments, the ones we do suspend the rules are primarily, almost, almost comparatively, planning commission has approved an addition or assigned or something. Instead of making people wait six to eight weeks to start their project, we'll suspend the rules. That's the typical one, we only get one reading.
People go to planning commission to put an addition on their house, or when they start a business, whatever, they make a recommendation to city council, and then city council wants to act on that. So we will try to do that as fast as we can so that they can.
Start.
Get going.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, ordinance for third reading, none. Uh, resolutions for first reading, Mr. Bailey?
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash forty-four, resolution amending two thousand fourteen appropriation, resolution two thousand thirteen, that's state of Miami, ten hundred acres.
Resolution for second reading?
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash forty-one, resolution authorizing advance for local taxes for fiscal year two thousand fifteen.
Resolutions for third reading, there are none, um, old business?
If I may, I would encourage all residents to attend Chimpson's meeting tomorrow night so they have a clearer understanding. I don't know if this is all due, but I want to do, but I just be curious, Mr. Bailey, at your leisure, if you could let us know what the amount of uncovered balance is. Well. Maybe for the general. Well, appropriation resolution sent from the uncovered balance, I'm assuming of the general fund, how much we have uncovered. That's all the question. But I think Mr. Barnes has questions.
Yes, he is. Uh, in old business, uh, I brought, or we brought, uh, leave, uh, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, uh, amending the, uh, non-hunting, or hunting ordinance in Monroe Falls to accommodate, um.
Metro parks.
Metro parks, restricted hunting in Monroe Park, subject to all the things discussed that night. I, I'd like to ask that they just be assigned to a committee and, uh, and reviewed and, and maybe settled sometime in, in two thousand and fifteen, we could, uh, discuss it for a while.
Safety.
Position. Yeah. I think that's good, yeah.
And I would ask, and in the same regard, maybe, I know he's to the committee, but maybe ask Mr. Morrison come up with some language that, we just want to accommodate metro parks to be able to thin the deer herd.
Yeah, I think maybe to clarify for you, so you don't think very bad about not being, uh, all the time. Uh, is, the metro parks, they issue so many permits each year, uh, to, to cull the deer herd in the metro parks. And Monroe Falls has a very restricted hunting ordinance, which it should have. Um, and, uh, for that reason, uh, no instrument in the parks, although the park does employ sharpshooters, that, uh, last year, they, uh, they killed nearly sixty deers, fifty or sixty deer, uh, in a sharpshooting program. Uh, a resident is interested in receiving a permit from Metro Parks to hunt in a very restricted date and time, uh, and he would like the option of being able to do that in Monroe Falls Park, subject to Metro Parks regulations, subject to passing our, our, uh, P compliance of our laws. So the request is to, to look at that and amend our ordinance to specifically allow, uh, hunting in Metro Parks on restricted dates, subject to very, very strict, uh, conditions and permit, uh, in line with Metro Parks, and that's.
And how restricted, do you recall that at the camp?
Yeah, however, however, our.
That's a great question.
The, the next one is, uh, somehow, I believe it was in, maybe August or September, I mentioned the possibility of allowing, uh, a business loss carryover, uh, a period of time for businesses to start up in Monroe Falls. I'd like to have that signed into being as well. Uh, I believe that would be finance on it, and, uh, maybe again, schedule a date in two thousand and fifteen, we could, uh, review that and amend that ordinance as well. I don't know what's involved, this is due to, uh, making that happen, but.
Mr. Fokel, taking this committee, perhaps taken upon us, I'm assuming he's still a committee chair. He runs the O.
That's pretty good, though.
That's, yeah. That's, yeah. That's. Realize. You have to actually read that, Mr. Barnes.
Read, understand, apply. But that's, uh, that was all I had for, for old business. Okay, thank you. Any else? Just may I add a quick one, since our audience is a lot of, uh, young people, um, we had, I had the privilege of honoring, uh, two distinguished Stowe Monroe Falls High School graduates, and, uh, kudos to the Stowe school system. Uh, we had, uh, Dr. Albers, who's a, uh, doctor with Cleveland Clinic, uh, she's, I think, class of ninety-three from Stowe Monroe Falls High School. Her parents own the So Ken and the Mahs School, they're both, and she's been on the Odd Show, she's written several books about, uh, she's a psychologist, about depression, weight loss, different titles, well-known, well-respected. And the other one, the name's, unfortunately, I can't remember, I grew up in Heather Hills. He's a doctor with, uh, M I T, which is the premier engineering school probably in the world, definitely this country, and, um, he's involved with NASA, the Defense Department. His list, the resumes, as I told, uh, Russ Jones, the superintendent, after the meeting, I don't even find, uh, two people, one class as distinguished as these two people. So, uh, I don't know what high school you go to, but Stowe Monroe Falls definitely has, uh, some, uh, credit tools, some distinguished alumni. And on that note, uh, any new business? You can have, uh, there's no need to go into executive session, um, I'd like to ask for adjournment.
So, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Call a meeting.